I saw that.
That was Leanne as usual. Welcome everyone to the council meeting. Consideration for approval of the mess.
One more.
Josh. Don, any further discussion? All in favor, sign the vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote, motion carries unanimous. Paul's saying four zero one. Concerned item five eight, we see any questions?
The payment to that Robert flat for that utility shed, was that a bid item or was it just?
We just went to the local plumery yard.
Okay, four zero.
Excellent. Just one vote.
Just one vote?
Yeah. It was built on site.
Probably it was shattered, but I haven't seen it yet.
It was eight by thirteen.
What they know?
I think it's eight by twelve.
Eight by twelve, eight by fifteen. There's a lot of school items that were being stored in the office area. Plus stuff that we were storing outside too. You know.
Can I put it on the outside?
Do you remember you reminded us this summer or the spring that it got too late when the pool closed, you're gonna do painting inside Steve?
Joe's got it covered. Got square one ready.
Well, okay. Painting or just working on getting painted?
Are we doing it ourselves or is it being contracted?
Well, I had high school students that indicated an interest and they emailed me on Saturday and said, I think this job's too big for us, so we're gonna have to contact some painters and hire someone to do it.
Yep. We'll do it before.
Yeah, it'd be really nice if we should get it for all other tenants.
Right.
Did you go in or Steve?
I am.
All right, any other questions? Do we need a motion to approve it from Paul?
Sorry.
Don, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote, motion carries unanimous. Go down to eleven A, spear forming a meeting, they put a water heater in the residence.
What did you do?
Put in a water heater, motion by nine, does that second?
I'm sorry.
Josh, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote, motion carries unanimous. Thirteen A, ordinance related to private kennel stool.
Come on in.
Okay, please.
Sorry.
Another one for fighting, Lisa.
Uh, before you is a proposed first reading of amendment to our zoning ordinance. Most specifically, uh, we had an inquiry this summer, someone asking questions about the placement of a private dog kennel. And after a review of the ordinance, we find that there was nothing in our, in, in our existing zoning ordinance that, that gave us any direction as to where these could be located. So after visiting other ordinances, um, Steve and I drafted up this, this ordinance which spells out a definition for a private kennel as well as where it can be located on a lot. Um, the planning commission reviewed this information at their public hearing on September twenty fourth and recommends, um, its adoption.
So this is, this is a chain kennel that I have my dog in. This is not used for breeding purposes, correct? This is a whole different thing.
That is correct. So if you look at this picture right here, that's kind of what we're getting at. Uh, there's another definition in the ordinance for what you're referring to, the breeding sort of situation. This is just for those structures that house pro- animals for the residents that live there and where they can be located.
Why does somebody want to locate them in front yard or what?
Well, yeah, yeah. When you look at this picture right here, this kennel actually belongs to this house right here.
Are you talking that structure with like a blue tarp on it?
Right, which is a dog kennel, but like I say, our ordinance didn't have any, anything in it to address this sort of a situation. So, um, that's where it's.
So in that case there, it'll involve it's too close to property line?
Right, it would need to come over so that it wouldn't be in the side yard.
It's gonna, it's gonna just be a structure, so it has to follow the zoning rules for structure. That's my utmost to think.
Right, yep. We added it to the accessory structure section, um, added a definition so that we can define what a private kennel is. And then, yes, we added, um, where this accessory structure being a private kennel can be located. That is in the rear yard at least five feet away from the property.
That's good. I was involved in that.
Yep.
There should be a first reading and it would be, uh, in effect, I think the second reading, correct?
Um, question?
Yep.
What happens to the ones that are already in existence, like grandfathered in?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay. Any questions?
That's what I was gonna say. We talked about. There are.
Any other questions? Also wishes?
Some more.
Okay, finish the reading. Paul and Josh, anything you wanna add, Mike? Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by showing hands. Vote. First reading passes five zero unanimous. So we're back for second reading in two weeks, in which time after publication goes into effect.
Yeah, publication.
Okay, very good. Okay, thanks. Hang around here. Southwest Minnesota Housing Partnership Development, agree on?
Sure. This is just an agreement. Um, as a follow-up, uh, a couple of meetings ago, you approved our meeting board with an application to the Department of Employment and Economic Development, um, to try to obtain another small city's development program, um, grant. And before you, uh, for your consideration, it's just a grant agreement, um, authorizing us to work with the housing partnership and authorizing our collaboration with the city of Sleepy Island. As you'll recall from our last meeting, we, um, are going to split the cost of the application with the city of Sleepy Island, so it's very cost effective for us. Um, however, uh, we need a authorization to go ahead and execute this particular agreement, um, with those parties.
Nine, answer a second.
Sorry.
Paul, any further discussion?
Where do the funds come from for the education fee and stuff?
Uh-huh. We reviewed it and as proposed in our last meeting, they'll come from the same place we've taken them before, which is the capital improvement fund.
Any other questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote, motion carries unanimous, thanks, Leanne. St. James Place Utilities, there's a letter in your packet. Mike Schrader called, they, it was signed by Al, but the son Mike asked me if I would read this. That's our company name, if anyone to read it. Dana Cavilla, who's a manager, is here in our audience. We have some questions she may answer or refer to Mike, whatever we have. So this is dated September first. Uh, from Mike Schrader, our family has owned and operated St. James Place since nineteen eighty seven. Although not fully occupied, we have maintained a steady occupancy and invested in the property to keep it viable. Admittedly, it would not be considered a class A property due to the limited amenities, rent capacity and housing stock, but it is a viable form of affordable housing. We are now at a bit of a crossroads. Over the past several years, the cost of utilities, specifically water and sewer, have skyrocketed in St. James and the property is no longer able to support itself. More occupancy would help, but it is difficult to survive when fifty percent or more of the gross rent for the property goes to pay sewer and water charges. Furthermore, our delivery system is challenged and we do not have any way to enforce accountability for the use of water or waste of water. We reviewed the possibility of installing meters on our own, but we're told that the city will be doing a certain style and that it will be proven to utilize the citywide update. It has yet to happen. Our two primary concerns that we would ask your assistance are as follows. Number one, water meters. We were under the impression that the city was installing water meters citywide in the summer of two thousand thirteen. I'm told that the plan has been delayed, we cannot wait any longer. Two, repair credits. When we have documented water leaks, we would ask for a credit on our bill. Obviously, this water did not pass into the sewer treatment facility and was not delivered to the end user. We have paid for the repairs. Three, subsidize or reduce pricing. Bottom line, the viability of this property is in question. We're asking for your assistance with these areas so that we can continue to operate the property. We believe that the availability of affordable housing is important to any community and would hope that you see the value in assisting St. James Place with reduction in pricing of the municipal services you supply. In the coming months, we will need to make some hard decisions as to the ongoing viability of St. James Place. These considerations may include park closure or a sale. We'd appreciate any feedback or assistance. Sincerely, L. Schrader, assigned by Mike Schrader, who's Al's son. If you want to give a little background on the water meters, I don't know if it comes from Mark or Joe or who.
We've been exploring the possibility of purchasing electronic meters for the last three years or, or longer. And, uh, we put together a proposal earlier this spring to go ahead and make that purchase. Uh, we received notification from the legislature that we would not have to pay sales tax after the first of the year, which is a significant savings to us. So that is why we have delayed doing that. Probably within the next thirty days when we'll be bidding out for bid, the installation and purchase of those water meters to be done after the first of the year.
Are they, are they saying they don't have water meters now or they're just obsolete?
They do not have water meters in each individual trailer.
So it goes just one billing?
They have two meters, I believe, on each end of the park. And those meters are red and there's one bill that's, uh, to the, uh, to the park itself.
St. James Place.
And what they're requesting is that we put a water meter in each individual trailer, making each individual trailer home responsible for their water usage. We do have some issues with that because of the fact that there is also common areas that what happens to the water loss between the main meters and each individual meter. Also an issue of a disconnection of water service in winter time. Uh, where are those meters going to be located? Uh, they can't freeze up because if they do, they must and we've got real mess on our hands. So the meters themselves would end up being placed inside the mobile home. Typically, the shut-off for trailers, I believe, is underneath the trailer. So there's insulation factors that have to be considered. And so we've got some, some concerns that would have to be addressed.
Do other parks do in their communities as far as that goes? Do they have individual meters or is it a common meter?
It's a combination of different things. Some parks do, some parks don't.
Obviously, as we have done previously in if there's, uh, usage to the main meter, even if it doesn't get to the individual, it's paid for because it's, it's been used someplace.
Right. That would, that would be, if you metered places, the common areas would be built to St. James Place.
But is it possible, if you have two common meters now, Mark, or two meters that go into, excuse me. There's still gonna be some common areas, but how we're gonna figure out what goes into each individual?
Yeah, if you put a meter in each individual trailer house.
Okay.
Or mobile home.
Yep.
Uh, you'd have to take the readings off the two individual meters that we have.
Okay.
Then take the water usage for each north side, south side, subtract what the mobile homes use compared to what our usage is. The difference would be made up by the.
Balance goes to St. James Place, the balance of the bill then would go to St. James Place.
Right. It would have to because if they have a leak, we, we won't have any, uh, any way of knowing about what the usage difference is.
So if there's a leak somewhere between the main meter.
Correct.
Going to the individual meters, St. James Place, the owner shouldn't be responsible for the usage and the sewer.
Yeah, because it's, it's still being metered there.
And then we go to the next step, how about the sewer portion? Because sewer is based on water consumption. How do we build, can you, is there a way to figure out how you build a sewer body separate, you know, if they have water usage or?
You'd have to build each individual trailer for the sewer usage. Each mobile home for the, uh, use of their water would be their, their sewer usage and then the la- the other could be possibly from leakage or whatever.
But then again, the balance then would go to the two main meters of St. James Place, whatever. Okay, very good. Have you talked to Mike at all about that data? Is that, have you discussed that part at all or not really?
He hasn't discussed much about what's going on with the meters because he's unaware of what's going on.
Okay, okay, very good.
How would that work with the, uh, basic fee for the sewer? Everybody has to pay the meeting, that's going to be a twenty-five dollar fee to pay off the money for each individual.
Each individual meter would be, be just like a household.
How is it you wouldn't know?
They get billed for it as if each one of those is an individual household.
Correct, that wouldn't change.
So the electricity is built per house? Per water?
Per bill, water's divided up. Water is just built to the park.
To the park.
Their responsibility if they want to spread that out amongst the tenants.
The residents?
Right.
Josh.
There's no it's collected to me.
The wa- the water's done very similar to like a apartment building. You have one water meter, multiple electricity.
You're divided by ten.
So you only have one meter charge.
You don't, they don't even divide it and charge it to the, to the tenants themselves at all at the park. They just, they pay for it all.
We pay, we pay now, right now. And that's our hopes of getting water meters because a lot of our homeowners waste their water or they have a leak. They let it leak. Last month our bill was seven thousand dollars on one hand. I mean, they waste it and it's not like, it's because they don't care.
It's because they don't care.
They don't care.
Sure.
But there, there could be fifteen, forty per unit. They still like a just one meter charge. But they're, uh, two meter charge, but what Mike was asking about was the flat rate, they only have one.
No, they're, 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 each individual mobile home, even though they've only got two meters.
So if there's thirty mobile homes, are they have thirty sewer rates on?
Correct. It's just like this, the county recycling fee. The county recycling fee is based on each mobile home, just as it's a household in the residential area of community.
To me, that would only make sense to put meters in each trailer then. That's, you know.
Sure, they're trying to cut the loss.
Cause there's, yeah, there's, they're kind of, you know, plus it would help the city with its water. I mean, our, our overall water usage, you know, if there, if you can get a few people to stop wasting that much water, we, you know, we as a city, it's, don't have to pay the DNR as much for our water. We're not using as much.
But they're thinking about, uh, St. James Place is paying it now, that's gonna pass it on.
But still, overall, it might help, save some water because it'll make people more appreciative, they're putting the bill.
Mark, is there a challenge however for winter months with water meters?
There will definitely be a challenge. Like Joe said, you gotta make sure that they don't freeze and break. And then who's gonna pay for putting each individual meter into that? Is the city gonna pay that? Who's gonna be in charge of maintenance on those meters? The city?
I thought that was discussed already.
We don't, yeah, we haven't got a total knowledge of what's gonna happen yet.
If we install a meter at home, who pays for it? The homeowner?
I'm sorry. I believe, like she said, we had talked with Mike, right?
I thought it was discussed that the city was installing them throughout the city.
Correct.
Right?
Existing.
But these aren't ours and I know Mike had said something, we'll discuss the costs later, but we haven't heard anything. And we, of course, we, we're not done going to bid and everything yet either.
So until the first of the year, it's because we're saving sales tax, is that, is that when we're supposed to discuss though?
We'd like to get that discussed now ahead of time.
We're not purchasing until the first of the year. Dana, to answer your question, because of sales tax, but it'd be good to discuss it now so you know when we can buy them. If we're gonna buy forty extra, who's gonna put them in, who's gonna pay for them?
Right.
That would be good to be discussed now. Tanner, your question?
Would we treat the mobile homes different than any other residents that we, if we decide we're gonna put them in the residence age, would we do the same, we'd definitely do the same thing for the trailer? Or two, I would think.
We already have two meters that metered the trailer, Mark.
Well, you have a meter in my house, okay?
Correct.
You're gonna put a different one in.
Correct.
We haven't decided who's gonna pay.
But these trailers don't have it yet.
Right.
So that's, that's why we.
So what, what he says, when, when somebody builds a brand new house, who pays for the water meter?
The city pays for the water meter. The city will give you the water meter for a brand new house. If you want a sprinkler meter, you have to buy that.
You pay for it.
Yes.
That's, I think, what they're asking for the trailer house is who's gonna pay for it or?
I don't care. I just want you guys to know, I mean, so we know what we're, what, everybody's on the same key.
What's a, what's a guesstimate for, for meter charge, what it costs?
Pardon me?
What's a, what's a guesstimate, just an estimate of what a meter's gonna cost us, a new, new down meter?
I believe it's gonna be a hundred and six, a hundred and sixty to a
hundred and eighty.
Hundred and eighty, somewhere in there.
They say it's two hundred.
That's for an existing meter.
Correct. That's gonna be.
If you got to put a brand new one in, it's gonna cost.
It's gonna be more for the plumbing.
Yeah. Than labor and.
Correct. And that's why we're going to bid, to find out what this is gonna cost us.
So if there's lines running to each mobile home, would we be able to attach the meter into that line?
Should be able to. Now, like I said, like Joe said, do you want it underneath the trailer?
I think that when Mike was talking to me about it and Al himself, we, we also had somebody come down. There's meters that can be installed right in, in a mobile home, there's water heaters that can be.
Right. Gives you right by the furnace.
Placed right there inside the home. Because the new, the meters that they were talking about, and I think that you're, you know.
At one time, we just stopped.
They're scanned. You don't have to read them, they're scanned. So it could be inside the water heater.
Correct. Right. All, all the new water meters that we get will be radio read and we'll be able to just basically drive by, read them.
So that would help prevent freezing if it's in the water heater compartment.
Right. In by the water heater furnace inside the mobile home.
I mean, I know there's a lot of concerns about them freezing up, but, I mean, I've heard of residential homes. I mean, my neighbor behind his, his room's up. I mean, it can, it can freeze up in residential homes too. So, I mean, I don't know. I just want to get it taken care of.
Yep, I understand that. So we should have a discussion then with Mike?
And like I said, we need, we need to get a lot of things out on the table so that everybody is in the same understanding. Are we gonna be in charge of maintenance on them or what do we do? Just a lot of things.
Who does it on a residential home, the city?
The water meter we take care of. If it freezes, breaks, if it's bad, we replace it, yes.
When it's froze because of mobile home, for a reason for that, do we still? If it wasn't our fault that it freezes, do we still replace them?
We've never, we don't have any mobile homes with water meters, so we don't do anything with it.
Or my house, if my house freezes? You bring the meter?
Yeah, uh, we'll be over there to take care of it.
I understand that, but I mean, I don't have to pay for the meter because my.
Yes, you do.
Okay, I have to pay, okay, so, okay.
There, there's.
Then you answered the question. So then the tenant pays for the meter.
Twenty, there's a twenty-five dollar charge for the, for the replacement of the meter.
Sorry, Brian?
For the first offense. If there's a second offense in the year, then it's fifty dollars.
Okay, so we, so should we just have Mike come down and then three, four people sit around the table and try and figure this out?
I, we gotta talk to them somehow.
Give you the other recommendation.
I do think you should get a couple people together and talk to them. I think there's some real issues here.
Okay.
And they'll distinguish a manufactured home from somebody else's house.
You don't think you can separate them?
Not necessarily.
Okay, all right.
Well, if you're looking at installation costs, right now, we don't know who's gonna pay for it, the homeowner or the city or whatever. If it come down to some kind of, uh, cost that is figured out, because we're talking new units at the trailer court. Their, their costs would be higher, that would have to be figured out. It's just the house, um, western is gonna cost X number of dollars. A trailer house out there is gonna cost a little bit more, probably to split the costs up because of the additional labor, materials and stuff, so. I don't think that's a big problem.
You had a question, Dana? No, okay. So who do you recommend to visit with Mike? Caleb, Steve?
Excuse me?
Be involved?
Yep, right.
Mark.
Any council members?
Didn't you guys meet at one time with Mike?
It's been a while ago.
Year and a half, I suppose.
Yeah, at least.
I'll sit on it. So if one of the council members volunteered to, that should be an issue.
I would sit on.
It'd be during the day.
I'll make, if I know about it ahead of time, I can make arrangements. And the second issue was.
Okay, yeah. And the second question was repair credits. We have documented water leaks, we would ask for a credit on our bill. We've never done that for anyone else. If they watered one through it, they had to pay for it even if it was past the meeting. Do you have, council, have any thoughts on that?
It's never been done through?
We've always, to my knowledge, I can't think of one time in in a couple decades that we have forgotten a lot of it. Remember any, Steve? I don't think that, it's if it comes through the meter, it's paid. We don't, uh, just because it wasn't used, it wasn't our fault. If it came, came through the meter, if it, say the water softener ran for an hour and it was six, eight hundred bucks, see, whoever the owner was had to pay for it. You wanna, made that policy in, where this, everybody? Don, Paul?
Yes.
Don? All right, then subsidize or reduce pricing? And what does that be Mike is asking for on that? We charge everyone the same, it's pretty
Pretty fair.
Difficult to charge somebody one price and somebody else another location, right? So there probably would not be a subsidy on prices. But we'll have a, we'll get a letter out to Mike or be in contact with him and set up a meeting. Dana, if you wanna get it to him, but have Mike, Mark, Mark, Ben, Josh, myself, Joe and Steve Sunday. Any other council person, we can have one more there if they want to be clear for that. That's good. So, okay, everybody? I don't think we, need a vote on this or not, Steve, just, okay. So let's go forward. If you can pass it on to Mike, Dan, Dana, we give it. Okay? Uh, thirteen, ignition house quotes, so.
We advertise for demolition, uh, two houses and the EDA property, known as Cunningham property, and the house that we burn, uh, for down in the north. Uh, we ask each one of the ditters to provide us a little bit of a bid on each parcel. And then, uh, a pack, if they did a package deal, what that would be. And, uh, the cap is recommending that we take a package deal. Corey Cease represents C and D Services LLC for fifty-nine thousand, then fifty-one fifty. We also had bids from Roadways, from B M Builders, and M A A C.
Anything you wanna add, Corey?
Do you wanna mention the other totals?
Uh, B M Builders came in at sixty-two thousand, two hundred and sixty. M A A C was ninety-two thousand dollars, and Roadways was ninety-three thousand, nine eighty-five. M A A C is the organization that took down the mosque.
Corey's bid was low total at fifty-nine nine, fifty-one fifty.
I would prefer to go with one.
I added enough and it's less than, it's like four hundred bucks difference. Yeah, it's not much.
Okay, Steve to do one more?
Yes.
So moved it a little bit from Corey for the package deal.
Josh? Anybody wanna know where it's coming out of? That we're gonna bid? Somebody like to know that?
Yeah, it's a confirmation.
Okay, that one. Uh, have any you wanna add?
Nope.
Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote.
Yeah, for two years, uh, we've probably should be doing one or two houses or three houses a year.
Nine, he wants eight.
That's a great idea.
I agree. But we're gonna have to build the Capitol, who must fund up.
Well, we just, we just need one or two years, so think about it and it's just gonna be a bit of that, right, so we got back today.
Well, what will happen in, in these cases is we own the commercial property, EDA. Uh, the other three properties, uh, we'll end up putting a special assessment against them. Uh, one of the properties, the individuals stopped paying the real estate taxes on. That's the Long Kitty Corner from the Methodist Church. The one that we. Yes. The one that we burned down is already a man in the state of Assala. For failure to pay property taxes. And the county is aware of the fact that we will be adding these assessments to them. And the other property, the individuals are still paying the real estate taxes, but this will be added on to the real estate taxes.
To make a long story short, in the next five years, we'll probably get title to all of them and we'll be selling them off for five hundred, a thousand bucks a lot. And we'll be eating this, but it'll be, it's oriented to be for the betterment of the community.
For any of those lots as of right now, after the home is cleared, big enough to build on? Or basically something that's something you need to go buy just for?
Both, some are, some aren't. The third avenue's up, I don't think is big enough, the three hundred third avenue north and twelve, eight hundred, eighth avenue north is big enough. It's a planted lot at fifty by hundred and fifty, but the chances of somebody building there, they would say are two chances slim or none, it's really none. They probably didn't sell it to a neighbor like, if you remember fifteen years ago or so, we had a blighted, uh, was it blighted property fund down, we had the grass, we hauled it away and then sold it to neighbors for five hundred bucks, I think, or something. The program from the state, there's no one.
Basically, for five hundred bucks, I would, you don't mow the grass.
Yeah, and I just picked a number, I think that's what we say in the fact and you're not gonna get a new house in an old.
No.
Just in the.
And an example is recently we just sold a parcel next to Monroe's Park and we got significantly more than that. And again, we showed the property owners, this is what the city has in it, and what we paid actually out in cash. And, uh, they were willing to look for us.
And we're cer- certainly not gonna get this amount for all of these lots. We still need to clean up the city.
Absolutely.
The great idea.
Okay. All right, you, you gonna do that this fall yet, Corey, or spring or when?
By December fifteenth, it's supposed to be done.
And you think you can make that okay?
Yep, as long as the weather cooperates, then it should.
Okay, very nice. All right, thirteen E. Uh, St. James H R A, we have Jerry Carson served on our H R A and they're moving to, I think it's Chandler. So we accepted his resignation. If he keeps sending a letter, thank you letter to him, Joe, we'll help to sign it. And I'd like to ask for the council's consideration to appoint John Becker, he's wanting to be, to take Jerry's place on the H R A. Josh?
Say.
Paul, any further discussion? All in favor, is anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Paul, watching Jerry, if it's, again, thank Jerry for his years of service on there. And welcome John Becker and thank John for, uh, being willing to, uh, serve the city on the H R A board. Thirteen F, woman of today proclamation, we have that in front of you, the proclamation for September twenty-second to the twenty-eighth. For the woman of today, I'd ask for your consideration to put this proclamation. Paul and Noni, any further discussion? All in favor, is anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Paul, watching Jerry unanimously. Just Center for Energy for information, is that all?
Yes.
You have any, your package information on Center for Energy increase? Four point eight eight percent energy for the folks watching Center for Energy. Public Utilities Commission has approved an increase of four point eight eight percent on your Center for Energy bill. So you're looking forward to an increase in your bill effective, uh, October first, two thousand thirteen. Uh, there's a water outage tomorrow, Molly had it on our city website, tell me where it is, Mark?
No water outage tomorrow.
Okay.
Road on Eleventh Street North from First Avenue to Armor will be closed. Still be accessing Armor from the north side. Um, things changed, they're a little worried about the rain that's coming in, so probably won't be doing any, uh, more digging until Friday or Saturday. So the road should be open after tomorrow on Eleventh Street for a couple days and then be reclosed again Friday, Saturday.
Thank you. Don?
Water tower, is that clean process done?
The outside?
No.
Yes.
Looks like very good.
It's getting dirty again.
What's that?
It's getting dirty again on the outside.
Yeah, why didn't we clean it? This is summer, wasn't it?
Yes, yes. Don, though.
We better, uh, we better bite the bullet, spend the money and paint it.
Yeah, that color, that color and that type of, of spiroid water tower tank, it, uh, it condenses on the bottom, sits there and grows.
I, I just thought, I drove through the, drive through the day and I looked at that, I thought we just cleaned that thing. Looks terrible.
What was the cleaning? Was it four hundred, how much was it worth? I can't remember.
I don't remember exactly.
Should we go to a different color right now?
Well, I mean, and we, and we mentioned that if somebody had a cost versus the cleaning, now we'll do it, might as well clean it, but if we gotta clean it every two years or something, we might as well clean it. Of course, it might take us two months to decide what color to paint it.
Five, five council meetings.
What?
Five council meetings is all it took.
Oh, that first time?
Yep.
Oh, that's, that's two and a half months.
You wanna look into for next year?
I already have looked into some pricings.
For painting?
Yes.
And if you'd like to tell us what they might be?
Uh, ranging anywhere from, uh, eighty thousand up to, uh, about almost two hundred thousand.
Now, are you talking the whole water tower or say a portion of the water tower?
The water tower.
What would be wrong with painting a portion of it? About the bottom side that gets this color?
Depends about what color you're gonna paint.
That's, that's what'll be the big discussion.
And if you're gonna put a spray on and while you wanna.
Make it look like an Easter egg.
What it costs us to paint it or to clean it this time?
It was somewhere, it I'm not positive, Joe, do you, I, I just.
I'm looking up, we email you.
It was, for what, what he did, it was very cheap.
Expensive. Cheap and expensive.
Compared to the next bidder.
But it hadn't been cleaned for a long time, had it?
It had been, uh, three, four years at least.
So it's gonna get a note out or have Joe do it for just, I guess, for a whole water tower and I don't know, can you paint the third of the web or something like that on the same, like a
If you go of the same color.
But something that doesn't show the dirt.
If you go of the same color, you can, you do, you know, it just depends.
But that defeats the purpose if you get the same color, it's gonna show the dirt right away.
Well, so I mean, you're probably talking, if you wanna make it look good, is the whole thing. And for the little bit extra that we're talking about from the bottom that starts at the mold.
Yes.
It, uh, there won't be a whole lot of price difference, to be honest with you.
Cause they're up there.
Yes.
Okay. Into that, see, okay, anything else done? Paul? Steve? Uh, nice to see you, Doc. See you excited about being here.
I just got, I just got a resume.
Okay, good, excellent, okay. Steve? Mark?
They're, they're finishing up Eleventh Street. I, I will give, uh, C A G a lot of credit in the last two and a half weeks, three weeks. They've been working their tails off, making a lot of progress. Uh, doing a pretty good job, I believe, to be seen what, what time, when they're gonna finish up yet, but again, uh, they're finishing up Eighth Avenue and Eleventh Street today, making, uh, another major hookup. Uh, Sunday, we'll be ma- making another major hookup to Armor Rescue Meets on Ninth Avenue and Eleventh Street. So that area, there will be a watered outage this coming Sunday. Uh, those people affected will be notified. Um, and it will take six hours or so. So more information to follow.
Good. Nothing else? Mark, turn it.
Ding ding, no.
What, what did you say, Mark?
I said ding ding, in other words, he's dumb.
Dana, Dana, thanks for coming and we'll, we'll be in a timely manner to get involved with Mike at the mobile home park, just tell him that, that person's to call me.
Ding ding.
Thing, that's for, I want you to adjourn.
Come on.
Thanks, everyone, thank you, have a good evening.